I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for September 30th to order at 7:03 PM. Sorry, so close. We do have a quorum. Jim McCauley is online tonight, but he is not a voting member tonight, but he will be here. And we are going to go to executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss planning board appointments. Can I invite, or can Jim join even though he's not a voting member tonight?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I'm positive that they said in my house. You want to discuss it with Natalie?
We can, I mean, either way, we can. We can talk about it later. It's not going to make a bearing on the meeting.
No, it isn't.
Because there is nothing to vote on, really. So, yeah. Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We've got two sets of minutes, August 26, 2025, and September 8, 2025. We'll do that individually, but did anybody have any comments other than the ones that were already circulated? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the August 26 minutes.
I move that we accept the August 26 minutes.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine, all in favor. And I will entertain a motion to approve the September 8, 2025 minutes.
I motion to approve the September.
Motion by Lorraine.
I'm for Kevin.
A second.
Second, there you go, Kevin.
Second by Kevin, all in favor.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public, online or in person, to bring up anything this evening that is not already on the agenda.
Carl Marso, here is an observer for the meeting.
Carl. If there are no other comments, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
Remove that we close the public comment period.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine, all in favor.
Next item on the agenda is discussion of village code changes and corrections. Yes, so you do have in front of you, I know Mike wasn't at the last meeting, obviously, but he circulated this, and in front of you, you do have a color-coded chart. This is the second pass-through of the changes that Lorraine and I went through and that proposed to the planning board at last meeting. So, same process that we've been going through, but I know Mike went through the minutes and said thank you to everybody for not shuffling paper around and keeping side discussions to a minimum, so he could actually hear what was going on.
These, just the first page you have here, this has the red on everything, that's the initial one you got at the last meeting. That does not reflect any changes or anything. What you got, that was the third one. And then your second one, the second page.
Second page.
Which Lorraine and Mike.
Second page.
Is the breakdowns and recommendations that you asked for at the last meeting.
Oh, the right, okay, the write-up, yes, okay.
And the third page, your, your, all of the definitions of what you had at the last meeting.
So, those are the existing definitions in 14582.
Just big packet.
Something is missing, though.
So, if you take, so, the chart is the existing chart?
No, 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 it has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
No, it's in the definition or the.
Well, the second packet has the proposed changes that we discussed at the last meeting, and after that, there are some new definitions.
There are more definitions than this.
No, those are all the definitions that we're in here.
It ends with.
That's the last page for.
Oh, for just the.
It's not the complete, yeah, it's just the ones that were, oh, yeah.
I'd like to have a complete one, because it turns out, well, there's one that's out of order, but that's another.
And Mike, is this, oh, this is.
The additional discussion about mixed use versus.
Home occupation.
Yeah, okay. Do you want to start with anything in particular? Well, I'm going over what, you know, going through the, listening to the meeting, there was, it got into a couple of discussions. One I wanted to talk about was, it sounded as though you were lumping home occupation as being the same as mixed use, and they're completely different. They're very close. It's almost like a.
Did we really think that?
There were some, there were definitely questions about what.
Whether it was, yeah, no, I guess I, I don't know as I felt.
The big difference is what I highlighted in the actual definition, which home occupation has to be the person that owns that home.
Right.
They cannot, there's been a few times in the village that I've denied a couple of people who wanted to rent out their garage to someone else who wanted to know. That's not a home occupation as per definition.
Right.
And I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that there is a clear difference between home occupation and mixed use. And they look similar, if there's a clear difference between them.
I didn't walk away with that feeling that we were going to combine them.
No, no, we didn't talk about combining them, they were just, as we were talking about, you know, what if, what if the mall had residential and it was, that would be mixed use.
It could be, it would be mixed use. That would be mixed use.
So, the home occupation definition.
Were condominiums.
There, because it's mixed use there.
If it would be condominiums, though, if someone owned.
If they owned it there, right, yes. If they developed property and sold it to people.
And then had a home occupation within their owned unit.
Yeah, could they do that?
Yes, and it would be clearly incidental, and incidental being used as it is.
Oh, yeah, 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 right, okay.
It happens to show up, it's not built or designed for that purpose.
Right, okay, that makes total sense.
That's the only thing I wanted to just kind of make, kind of clear up, because you folks are talking about that for about 15 minutes. That's all I got.
One of the things that, on our chart, this conversion, as we've gone from, okay, so X is an allowed use.
Yes, it's just allowed.
Basically, is code officer approval, right? It still has to have your approval, doesn't it?
Basically, yeah, if I categorize it in that, for that use, then it basically just goes to the building permit and I go through all of those.
So, it's a building permit, essentially. Is, that's what I was suddenly thinking, okay, so what does X really mean? It means, I mean, they can't just do it without somebody looking at it.
Right, so like, in low-density residential, you want to build, build an additional residential building on the single lot.
It's allowed.
It's allowed, you don't need a special permit for it.
But what do you need?
It's allowed, it's, it's allowed, but without any further review, that it goes to my review.
Well, that one has, that was a bad example, yeah.
Because you've got, you've got change of occupancy, too. Someone could have a change of occupancy.
But I mean, there's something, if somebody, somewhere, somebody is looking at the fact that they're going to do an, you need a building permit or something. Because what I'm thinking of is, is, for example, this whole, things that are going on with the businesses, and they're just sort of going ahead and doing things, and without somehow, and then, of course, it isn't an allowed use, and how do we avoid that? If it's just, I don't know, who, how do we get, convey to people that there is something that they need to come to the village for? Will they understand that?
Do you have an example you can provide?
Yeah.
Like the dairy one?
Right, so if they did.
Well, they were notified after the fact.
Right.
Yeah, because Lorraine, yeah, saying, what's going on?
They also had said, we probably should have come to you.
They probably should have, of course.
There's also people that get caught, I've done that before.
Right.
There's people that know better, too. Most of the time, you should, if you're going to change anything in your.
Footprint or anything.
On your parcel or whatnot, just come and check.
Just find out.
I mean, that's, I don't know if there's anything, if they're not.
I was just wondering whether we should clarify what X.
Yeah, but if they're not going to call and check with me to see if they need a building permit, they're not going to call and look at the chart, see if they.
Right, that's true, okay. So, it's working fine, basically.
Seems to be.
Like the one, so like a one-unit residential building.
Yeah, that's a better example.
Someone's not going to go just pluck a building down without talking to Mike first.
Right.
Just because there's an X on it.
Yeah.
It's just an allowed use, so the planning board doesn't have to.
We don't, it doesn't.
So, we don't get, that's what I'm saying, it's basically a code officer approval, is what I'm saying.
Right, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so like adult entertainment, you can't have that in low-density residential. It doesn't.
No, no, that's not, right.
Versus the X is, it's allowed there, Mike needs to know about that process. There was that X plus that I introduced in the last one, too, that's because there are, yes, it's allowed, there's just additional conditions.
Right.
It still doesn't need a special permit, so it won't come here.
Yep.
And then there are the two things that do come here, special permits, and special permits with additional conditions. So, that's the red SP and SP plus.
So, the, but I just wanted to be sure, so that essentially it's code officers.
Yeah.
Was my whole point, okay.
Yep. So, do we want to go through the kind of recommended changes that we had, we had talked about at the last meeting, and now that people have had a chance to hopefully absorb them a little bit? Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes. So, the first, the first set of those things that we had recommended adding.
Where is this? What did I do?
Where was, where was the? On the chart of use.
This is.
Through that.
Yes.
Okay. On a single, for a single lot.
Yes.
Okay. Indicated and the CLT is indicated as a special.
Special permit, yep.
And that's wrong.
Yes, okay, oh, thank you, yeah.
That is wrong?
That is wrong.
That's good.
That should just be.
Another X.
It should be gone.
Right, yeah, yep.
It should be an X.
It should be an X, and then BTD, it should be gone.
Yep.
Should be deleted?
Yes.
Thank you. I was going to, that was kind of throwing me for a loop there. So, it's LDR, MDR, HDR, and CLT with special permit?
No, just allowed.
Allowed.
Just allowed.
The X is just allowed?
Yeah, because that's an additional residential.
CLT does have special permits.
Oh, this is the July memo, sorry.
And then, BTD, it should be removed. It doesn't apply there, right? There's no, there's no additional residential building in business and technology, so that X and BTD is wrong. The special permit under CLT should just be an allowed use like it is under LDR, MDR, and HDR. And I will update these in the spreadsheet later, as we had agreed upon, we won't change anything unless we're at the meeting here, so.
Go on, go on.
Okay.
This is.
The second one was clinic added to business and technology district. And so, that is something that Carolyn and I had worked on with BTD, so that was something. It'll be in there anyway, it wasn't on the chart that we were reviewing, because it was in the kind of separate packet that Carolyn and I had worked on, the folks from the business and technology district.
And it's in the proposed.
And it's in the proposed, right, it's in the proposed changes that Natalie drew up for the trustees. And that would be a special permit.
Mike, I had in my notes that we were going to recommend to remove from HDR.
And that would see.
Which one?
Clinic. For clinic?
With clinic.
Had recommendation, I had written down recommendation to remove from HDR.
Yes, and that's under the next section. So, we can tackle these together, yeah, let's do, let's do that, because we did that for CLT for the first one, yes.
All right, I'm sorry to get confused.
Okay, so if you look at this one, the first packet.
Thank you.
From Mike, it's got a, things, recommended additions and recommended deletions under two different sections.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Together.
We already did that for the first, for the CLT thing.
So, yeah, clinic, we said add it to BTD, that's what Carolyn and I worked on. And then, as we had our discussion, we said remove last week, or last meeting.
We had removed clinic from high-density residential.
That's mine official.
Anyone have any comments?
About.
Right, we, the question was, why would we have a clinic in high-density residential? It was, right, definitely for low traffic, medium traffic, high traffic in business and technology, yes, but not, not in HDR.
That was, why is it in HDR? Okay, so this is, today is 9:30.
I want to give you time to catch up.
No.
Okay.
I just need the pluses instead of red.
So, on the chart that I have, there are pluses, if you look, but yeah, and for, what, give us about the next batch? I'll talk to Mike, we'll have the pluses next.
I just feel like.
And I think when we do, when we do push a new chart out, everything, it'll be either X, SP, or SP plus. We can still make it red, that's fine, but.
Yeah, but I think just for security, to.
Yeah, we'll do that. The next one was commercial assembly of soft goods, and the comment was potentially add that to CMD with additional, with additional conditions, so that would be SP plus. That's already in high traffic in business and technology.
What would the additional conditions be?
Yeah, that's the prompt, the thing.
I have a question, yeah, and I think, I think we have, we have talked to Mike about that.
So, which one is this?
Because right, commercial assembly of soft goods, so right now, it's just a special permit in commercial high traffic. We had talked about adding it to commercial medium traffic. If it's in high traffic, it's just a special permit, I would say it goes into medium traffic with just a special permit. Yeah, as opposed to.
Commercial assembly of soft goods, though, on this, this one.
Yep.
Line eight on there.
Is only in CHG and BTD.
Yep, and the suggestion was to add it to medium traffic.
Okay, and possibly.
But should it, right, should it just be a special permit, or should there be additional conditions?
Okay, so, the definition being, again, it, I guess, it depends on kind of what it is, their assembly, you know?
And right, and that was, right, jewelry, leather goods, clothing, scientific instruments, that's the definition.
Well, this, the types of uses consistent with that.
Yes.
If you look at the preamble in A.
Yes, yep.
Illustrate the types of using.
Yep, you know, so.
I don't see what kind of additional.
Additional conditions we would impose on that.
When you say assembly, now, it's one, I mean, you know, is there, are there going to be a lot of chemicals involved and all of that? I, you know, I, I'm not sure it should be, because, you know, the whole point of CMT was a transition from residential into commercial. And, you know, we do have on CMT, I mean, if, if somebody wanted to be making jewelry that involves, or, I don't know, something, solvents and things, the wind drift heads to residential, the majority, we're east to, or west to east, right? I'm not sure that it should be.
Where in here, Mike? Because there is something in here that talks about, I forget if it's a definition or somewhere else where it talks about, like specifically about.
Because I'm thinking of.
Not just chemicals and things like that.
When we, when we sit here sometimes, you can smell chow, right? So, if it would, if that would be something else, I wouldn't like that.
So, you're CMT, is what we have been talking about, that little small area that's right just up the road here.
Mm-hmm, but there's some on this side, too, of course, as we know, yeah. And that's the ones that are closer to the residences, actually.
Those ones, are you?
Yeah, but even so, as I'm saying, you can smell, and certain times when you're sitting here, you say, oh, they're cooking over at Chow's, you know? So, if it would not be food, it might be something, I don't know.
I mean, the, the code does address noise, odors, that type of stuff.
That's true.
The noise does.
So, that's not a specific definition, that's, okay.
No, that's.
So, that's, I knew it said there's something.
I mean, the general conditions, if we would really be a little less, you know, oh, hum thing, could, it's in there, and there is, yeah, noise.
I think you were thinking about home occupation.
Oh, maybe that's.
In that there are no noxious odors, or fumes that are detectable to normal sensory perception.
Okay, oh, yeah, there it is.
That's in the additional conditions.
Oh, that's in the additional conditions, okay. But do the general conditions, I guess the general conditions would.
If it's, there's a thing about would be injurious, whatever.
To vicinity, yeah.
I suppose you could have a case that that would be the case. Because I even, when I was going through this thing about schools, actually, we talked about that, what if they want to put a kid's school next to the gas station? You know, again, there's other stuff involved that maybe wouldn't be such a great idea.
Yeah, so you start, when you start getting to school, you also start getting into a whole group of new rules that New York State has.
Right.
They have to be 20 feet.
Oh, I remember the daycare thing, too, where it turned out we, we spent a lot of time in.
They kind of handle that. I know you can't be, I know you can't be anywhere near, we mentioned gas stations, so that, petroleum distribution.
Yes, well, that.
Many, they're so many feet away from hazardous areas.
Okay, so, I don't know, it's just something to think about, but as Natalie points out, if we're going to have special conditions, what are they?
What those are.
I suppose it could be noxious odors.
But that's covered under the general conditions, right?
Not specifically like that, really.
You could interpret it as not being injurious to the use and enjoyment of the other property in the vicinity.
That's what I, I would say that.
Or detrimental or endanger the public health and your general welfare.
I guess it could be, okay.
Right, as opposed to introducing new and maintaining.
So, then, is it really SP plus?
No, that, I think that's the question, right, I think it would just be SP.
Okay.
Like it is in commercial high traffic.
Yep.
And then, you know.
Okay.
If that situation kind of arises, the example that you mentioned, it would be, it wouldn't be under the general conditions, so.
Okay, all right.
So, are people okay with adding it to?
Yes.
Okay, commercial medium traffic?
Sorry, just as an SP.
Just as an SP, no SP plus. High-traffic food and beverage added to CMT as special, as an SP plus. And so.
The condition, you guys were talking, Mike, you were going to go on further about, basically, pick up where the board of trustees left off, is do you want to limit the number of drive-throughs within, what, either one per parcel or so many per, can you do it so many per district?
And that was, and so that was a question that came up after we had the last board meeting, we had said, here's a recommendation, let's pass it to the trustees, let's have the trustees discuss it. There was a little bit of an email exchange, I don't know if everybody was on it or not, but.
Oh, I don't remember this thing yet.
Okay, it was, were you?
I was, I sent around the proposed local law to the board of trustees, I copied you on it, because you're going with Carolyn on it.
You discussed.
And then, there was, so I had circulated that prior to our planning board meeting, then at the planning board meeting, there were two changes that were discussed, so then I re-circulated the next morning with the changes discussed, which would be eliminating the additional conditions on the ATMs and tellers, and then adding in the one drive-through per parcel to the CMT, high-traffic food and beverage. And then, there was discussion about if we limit the number of uses overall within the district, Mike had, Mike Scott had proposed that. I have, I don't have legal concerns about it, I just think that could get contentious among property owners. And then, whether or not he can subdivide that parcel into, then we could still have three fast food restaurants right next to each other, in theory.
So, it was pretty much, our recommendation was one per parcel, and then there was a kind of subsequent recommendation about X number per all of commercial medium traffic.
Well, one of the other things that I really should have brought up, because I'm in favor of limiting it in some way, and actually, when I, I did watch the Zoom of the discussion, and I mean, I think, I, the whole idea of a real strip mall kind of thing is just not my idea of good time, but also, the other thing about drive-throughs is idling cars are terribly polluting, they're one of the most polluting things, and we're not all electric cars yet, so it's going to be a while, and I just don't think we should encourage that either, speaking of noxious fumes and things. So, I just, I don't think it serves us well to have a drive-through every 50 feet, and I don't think that's what we want. And in fact, it was interesting, there was just a kind of a, I was at Bridges, and we were all sitting around, it was some other people were there visiting their, their family and members, and one woman said, oh, so I heard there's going to be a new restaurant at that place, and she meant.
Yeah, right.
The graffiti building. And I said, oh, I finally, it took me a while to figure out what she meant, she said, but I heard it was going to be a Chick-fil-A, she says, we don't want a Chick-fil-A, why can't we just get a real restaurant? And I thought, oh.
So, we do, so we do have trustee here tonight.
I have another idea that I just thought of for the first time. What if drive-throughs are allowed in the village only in conjunction with an interior space of X many feet with X kind of, like, complimentary uses? So, you can have a drive-through with a restaurant or with a pharmacy, but not a standalone drive-through that has no interior.
But, I mean, wouldn't McDonald's cover that issue?
Well, McDonald's has interior spaces.
Yeah, so, but I don't think.
We're worried about them putting three things on here, and they're all just literally drive-throughs, like, literally, like.
Is that what we just.
No, I'm worried about McDonald-type things, actually.
Stand, if they could subdivide into three, or how big could the square footage be?
That would eliminate.
That would eliminate.
Like a little coffee jar, because it wouldn't be a sitting area, it'd have to have an inside ear.
I'm just trying to think of how it can create a law that would eliminate some of the things we're worried about happening.
Yeah.
One of the ideas you floated, and you, Mike, already raised this, which is distance between drive-throughs, or the number of drive-throughs in the village, and now it's floating a third idea, I don't know if it's a good one, which is only in conjunction with interior use. I'm just trying to think of ways that the village can protect against.
With a certain number of.
Drive-through.
Which required.
Oh, yeah, an interior.
I do think ultimately, we'd need to have an additional.
Restriction of something.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think for the purposes of this conversation, I think adding high-traffic food and beverage to commercial medium traffic, we want to do, and it is a special permit with additional conditions, we just need to figure out what those additional conditions.
So, I think for the purpose of coming up with this, we want a conditional condition, do we want it to just be a special permit?
No.
Do we want a special permit with conditions?
I think plus.
Yeah.
But we need to figure out, and that's not a discussion for tonight, but it is a.
No, but just to note, well, with the current language is on for Monday.
And if that gets changed, then we have to set another day.
And the current language is one per parcel.
Just so you know.
Yeah.
I know.
Just so. I was just reiterating what Natalie said, that if any changes are going to.
We have to re-notice the law if we make substantive changes.
Yep, yep.
So, what? One per parcel.
One per parcel, right.
But what Carolyn's point is that if he could subdivide that to three, making like a small, like, coffee, yes.
What about, just for fun?
Oh, jeez, for fun.
I was going to say non-contiguous parcels. I was able to subdivide that parcel.
Into three.
Pots.
Four.
Easily enough. Then I got to thinking, okay, is there a density problem? No, because density is not an issue in commercial medium traffic. Then I got to thinking, is there a stormwater issue? And I called Brent Ross, and I said, am I thinking right here that you're going to have to have a certain amount of area?
For not being pervious.
For stormwater.[1680.52]
Yep.
He goes, yes, so that's going to limit how small you could actually go.
Good.
So you're not going to be able to cut it down. Like if, if I was easily able to make four units, someone a heck of a lot smarter, I can probably make five units out of it. But they're not going to be able to because of the stormwater issue.
Because of the stormwater issue, but when a subdivision comes to us, we don't have the improvements being put on it. So they can still subdivide it.
They can still subdivide it.
But the issue is going to be when they go to build on it.
They go to build on it and they have no room for stormwater. Then they're not going to build on it.
Oh, my goodness. Is that something they, is that something they would know upfront?
Probably have to tell them.
If they were good developers, yes.
I don't want to then get into a situation where we have subdivided parcels that can't be used.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Are they going to somehow know that?
Well, I mean, if they come in from.
I think the idea of a minimum square footage with a drive-through is a good idea.
What about non-contiguous parcels? That way you don't, wherever this potentially finds some other lot, or, or they can't subdivide it, you don't want five drive-throughs in a row. At least that way.
Oh, non-contiguous, I see.
Non-contiguous parcels.
So you have one on the corner, the one in the middle, no. And then Charles better step up quick.
Well, I'm just saying, though, does that address some of that concern about that kind of?
Could do all of it.
You know, five drive-throughs in a row.
The thing, what is, what was brought up at the discussion, within 50 feet of one another or something like that? Was, I guess that would be.
I watched it a long time ago. But, and there was something about shared driveways at one point, and there was a lot of ideas batted around. I mean, I think non-contiguous, a minimum interior square footage.
I mean, I think they accomplished well.
All the same thing.
It would be different, right? Non-contiguous versus minimum, right, minimum square footage, interior, you could still potentially, on, on that lot, I know that's the one we're focusing on, because it's easy to pick out, you could still have potentially three drive-throughs in a row that all had some interior.
Three McDonald's.
McDonald's, Burger King, and KFC. You could have them all in a row there.
Parcels probably wouldn't be big enough, but.
But.
I, I'm not saying pick one or the other. I'm saying you could have them all be conditioned.
Oh, okay.
Special conditions or separate law?
Additional.
Additional conditions on a special permit.
So that we could just add in right now.
Well, no, we would have to republish the law.
Right. That the trustees are considering.
Oh, that law? No, okay, I thought you just make it.
No, the proposed local, right, because we don't, no, the proposed local law. And we can't have these in here, right? This is just a batch of recommendations that we're going to pass to the trustees. So that would have to be included in the, right, that one.
Or we just remove, I know we want to make this work, but if it is in question, we have to keep republishing the law. I know we want to get the BTD and HHS done, so you.
I was to say, I was to say, what is the sense of urgency for this? Why are we?
For two in.
It's the HHS and BTD and HHS.
Question of the CMT in that BTD-HHS law, because that was ready to go.
And, but, okay, I would, then I think we just take it out of there for now, because I, I, I just think, we've got to get this right. We don't want to keep doing it if we don't have to. And we really have to, there must be some others things out there that makes sense.
Do you have to renotice it if we save something out?
Of course. Yes. Dig a ditch, fill it in, right? Oh, jeez. But I mean, I really feel like this is, we're rushing this, this particular thing. And I think it's important.
I think BTD, BTD and HHS.
I would, yes, I think they're fine to go. Yeah.
Do you have a sense, Carolyn, of?
Discussion at the trustee level?
Unanimous at the trustee level.
I think there was generally consensus, though, that they would like some restrictions on it.
Yes. I'm just saying, um, as it stood, though, I don't know that this was the only.
Oh, the only thing.
If someone had issue with changes to.
Kathleen had a lot of questions.
Yes, she did.
Right, I think the, right, so like Natalie said, it was in, I don't know if everyone heard or not, it was, you know, we thought that we were in a place where we could make some recommendations to the trustees that we could change to that, you know, to, to CMT, while other changes were being considered by the trustees to entice some development. We know that there's been an interest in it. Maybe this would be something that would change that. If we don't do anything, maybe, you know, that interest is gone, maybe there's other interests. But I think that was one of the, one of the questions, or open.
Yeah, I think there's certainly interest to add it, but just, there's obviously debate as to what the additional conditions could be.
And you, you don't add it till you know, do you?
Well, if we add it, and then in front of us, making sure, he comes in and applies for a permit.
Exactly.
Gets the benefit of the.
The interim.
Our, yeah.
Not having.
Right. Whether it's interim or final, you know, we don't know. Yeah.
Then I would, then I would just, we'll go with one and then.
And sometimes it takes a notice too, right? And no, and hearing, right?
It could, but we don't know how long you would then, yes, it would, but we don't know how long it would take us to come up with the additional conditions. The board of trustees has to do it.
I mean, if they, they're going to wait for the planning board to make this proposal.
We already did.
We already made a proposal.
Yes, we already did make our proposal.
Proposal, yeah.
What was your?
But one per.
But now you want to add on more conditions possibly. We just don't know what those would be. Non-contiguous, minimum interior square footage.
Right, so the trustees could adopt the recommendation that we already made, and the planning board could then make a subsequent set of.
They did adopt the recommendation that you made.
Now I have another recommendation.
Are we trying to accommodate some, something that I'm?
Yes.
So we're not talking about.
No, I, I think, right, I think everyone's aware, it's been in public meetings.
Right, okay, but I mean.
Some interest in that lot. And by us, you know, maybe being less restrictive, and I think there has been before in the past, too. But it's been so restrictive that what people have wanted to have done there, they haven't been able to. So I think that's what kind of spurred us to revisit this and say, if we were less restrictive in general, and also brought that in line with the rest of CMT, or added that to all of CMT, would that, you know, help develop some things in the corridor here that have kind of been stagnant for a while?
I think it would, but I just think that we better come up with the additional conditions before we say, oh, yeah, go ahead. Because you know very well, I'm, you know how my gold standard for all of these things, what would someone do?
Natalie, is there any legal flags or saying all of them, like let's put all three conditions. One is.
I have no issue with all three conditions.
Two is the interior seating of, let's say, X size, and three is.
Non-contiguous.
As many feet of another drive-through.
I would say non-contiguous or within, I mean, I would say non-contiguous parcels is the easiest way to then define, because where are you measuring?
Yeah.
The 50 feet from, like from the building, from the window, from the.
From the lot line.
From the lot line.
When you put lot line in, I think.
Sure, that's, I mean, I think then either non-contiguous or.
If you're measuring from the lot line, it can't.
You're not going to get a contiguous parcel.
Because across the street, that's fine. That's not necessarily, it's not contiguous.
Okay, so you're saying one per parcel.
One per parcel.
Non-contiguous.
A minimum interior square footage, which you need to figure out.
Okay, so let's think about that, then. What would be the interior square footage?
We're going to need some help.
Here you go.
To see what building sizes are.
Yeah.
Or what the, what fast food chains recently can be sized at. What was the Taco Bell?
It's not necessarily interior square footage.
No, it's.
It's a seating area. And, and so I, I think that's where it gets tricky with.
Well, it's also not necessarily like restaurants. Like what if it's the pharmacy?
The pharmacy is consistent with its interior use, a square footage.
So you're saying a standalone pharmacy?
I'm thinking.
The Kinney's.
Yeah.
Kinney is not a standalone pharmacy, though. They're within a drugstore that sells other stuff.
Right, that is, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, but that's not the, so, because it's, we don't have an allowed use anywhere for pharmacy, by the way.
I was just talking about high-traffic food and beverage.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is for high-traffic food and beverage, not a pharmacy.
Not a pharmacy.
Yeah, so it's, it wouldn't affect the pharmacy.
Rules for drive-throughs.
No, it's for high-traffic.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We don't.
Then it would be square, interior square footage.
Or seating, or.
Interior's. Or, you know, yeah, seating for, okay, so let's think about Ole Ole. How big is that? It's very tiny.
There's a few of them that you want me to look up. I can go in and look up what square footage they have.
But do you know the interior seating square?
Well, that's all they are.
Building.
I can tell you what the occupancy load is.
I think that's, and that, that's my question. Is it interior square footage? Is it occupancy?
So occupancy for seating X number of eaters, diners, patrons.
Patrons. But we're not going to be able to.
With the linens and, and so much.
Could we?
Um, could we make the, could, if we all agree tonight, could we make the recommendation to the trustees that it's one per lot, non-contiguous lots, and I don't, whether it's interior square footage or some occupancy level, make that recommendation to the trustees, let the trustees determine what these interior square footage occupancy is. That way, we don't have to wait until a further meeting for us to figure that out, to make some recommendation to the trustees. I know that, I know that the notice will have to be republished either way, but at least that way, they're then not waiting for another planning board meeting when I'm not really sure that it's really more of a Mike thing than really a planning board thing either way.
McDonald's here, how many, I've never been in it. So how many people do you think are in there?
If you guys name some places, I can.
Can you, can you look up, can you look up Ole Ole?
Ole Ole.
Taco Bell, because I can't remember. Was it 30? I can't remember. Maybe that was the parking lot.
Do you want occupancy?
Occupancy.
Occupancy, I think, is better. Yeah, it's better for.
I think that's.
They Taco Bell and.
Yeah.
I think that's better when it comes to what you would have to do for enforcement and things, than what we would have to do for. Okay, so you want occupancy?
Occupancy.
Ole Ole.
Ole Ole, I think.
And.
Taco Bell.
What was the second, what was the second one?
Ole Ole, McDonald's and Taco Bell.
Oh, McDonald's.
McDonald's is huge, Ole Ole is tiny.
It's tiny, yeah. And, and Taco Bell's probably, I would imagine so.
Well, Michael is doing that, though.
We're trying to carry on.
We can move on to the next one, recommended deletion. So we had talked about bank administrative operations, um, to have some conditions removed.
So that was.
In the local law.
Yeah, so.
There were the, and that's for CLT? Yeah, our, no, just.
That was, well, CLT is only applicable on CLT.
Right, so that was where there were the additional conditions about the ATM, and we had recommended to the trustees that those be removed. And that's one of the changes that Natalie drew up, and it's going to be reviewed by the trustees, or voted on by the trustees. So that would just be changing that to a normal special condition, like it is for medium traffic, and like it is for BTD.
In CLT.
In CLT.
So that's just.
Do you still need a special permit? Just.
But it's just, we're deleting that. We're deleting the plus.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that makes sense.
It, it's, it's very similar to some of the stuff that Carolyn and I did with BTD and just making it consistent, you know? Why does?
Yeah, I think it's really hard.
This has to be indifferent in the rest of the village, except in business and technology.
So the, the use is the use. I think they were driving factors years ago when it was developed, and those just don't stand anymore.
Well, I, I think it's, it is kind of weird, too, sometimes to, you know, just have this one standout.
Yeah.
Unless there's really some really good reason.
Yeah.
Like the one we're looking at right now.
Right, yeah, that's a good example. Okay. Um, the last one that we have to look at, and I think this is a, this is a, anyway, this is creating a new use for addiction, rehabilitation centers, whatever you want to, whatever the term is that we come up with for a use.
That's not, that's not, that's not in the current uses, but it's creating something new.
Okay, so when, so in our section that we haven't dealt with yet, we have special care facilities.
Yes.
And our recommendation was that we add rehabilitation services in them, basically, whether it's, you want to say, physical, mental addiction, whether, how, I'm not sure what level we want to go, but it sort of fits there, I think.
Yep, I think so, too, right. So I don't think we need to tackle this one tonight. I know that it came up in a few different areas. It came up in the ones that you and I did, it came up in the ones that Lorraine and I did.
Yeah.
So I think we can push this.
Because you had.
Next batch that we review.
Assisted living. And, yeah, and it's, yeah, it's very different.
And I think we do need something. I think that, you know, they're, they're obviously happening more. There's a need for them, and we don't have anything in there that fits.
No, it was.
It's very similar to, you know, other things where it's really up to a lot of interpretation, and then it can go to the BZA. So let's come up with something new that, you know, fits that.
Have to go to the.
Use that's popping up, you know, in municipalities around the country.
And I don't know, is, the definition for clinic didn't work either quite, because it wasn't, clinics don't allow overnight and.
Right.
Kind of thing, so.
Right.
Yeah.
And that was that thing that was going to be left up to, very similar to, to next door here. It was going to be left up, up to Mike's interpretation. The more that we can do to make things more clear in the code and not have to go to that level of interpretation.
And, or the BZA, yeah, no.
We should, we should define those, define them better, or define them in general.
So we'll, we'll push that to, right, that's not a change to the current chart.
So the changes on this page are.
Do you want me to go over what I'll change in the spreadsheet? So, and I'll go top and bottom.
This big guy, right?
Yep. So on the chart that everybody has in front of them.
Yep.
So we will change on line one, additional residential building on single lot. Under CLT, we will change that from SP to just X like the rest of them.
Mm-hmm.
And we will delete X from business and technology.
Okay.
Under line six, bank administrative operation, we will change SP plus in CLT to just SP. Okay.
Yep.
Line seven, clinic, we will remove that from HDR.
Okay, I didn't get that one.
And then.
It'll be added before, before we make this recommendation to the trustees, but that'll get added as a special permit to business and technology anyway.
Oh, it will be added?
Yeah, but it's, it's already on there anyway for what Carolyn and I did. For line eight, commercial assembly of soft goods, we will add that as a special permit, just SP under commercial medium traffic. And that's it.
Well, and then maybe SP plus under 14?
Oh, yeah, we'll wait until that gets back to.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think it's definitely going to be, it's going, it's definitely going to be SP plus. We just have to figure out what the plus is, so yes.
But not in CHD, correct? Or would we do it in both?
I don't think so. I, well, I don't know. I think high-traffic, we have less concerns about than medium traffic, because in high-traffic, there's, there already is that buffer that you talked about between residential and their. Right, and when you introduce the special permit to commercial medium traffic, there is, the buffer isn't the same, because some of those do back up against residential.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, does Mike have on here? Oh, there were some, uh, oh, so one of the other things was under definitions at the bottom of that page, updating the group residential definition. So he did provide a couple different new definition options there, if people want to talk about them. He did talk about the difference between occupation and excuse.
We want to, is that the only one we're going to update on this?
Yes. Yeah, I think, so group resi, uh, he said something about alteration to building or improved site should be cleaned up. Did he bring that up? Maybe that's what we already talked about. I don't think so. But there's four options for better definitions for group residential. I don't know if anybody has a preference over one of those or not.
The existing one says.
Club, dormitory, fraternity, sorority, rooming house does not include private or public hospital motel or hotel, which doesn't kind of fit, I think, the definition of group residential that people are used to nowadays.
Yeah, that, I would say we, not a motel or a hotel group, no. It is, though, a club, dormitory, fraternity, sorority, or rooming house, though, isn't it? Rooming house kind of.
Yeah, and so, so the options are.
Private or public housing facility that provides living quarters and meals. Oh, does it always provide? I guess it does.
We're looking at the definition you provided for group residence, or group.
Residential.
Okay. I don't know if it always provides meals.
I guess if you live there.
Yeah.
I guess a private or public housing.
Oh, we're just looking over the floor from right now to see.
A site, you know, residence by more than four unrelated. Four unrelated persons?
So this came up also, if you'll remember.
I do.
In Lansing Trails one.
The definition of family.
A family unit.
Yes, I recall.
So.
And, but, yeah, four. Small family. You could have a family that's.
Room and board to unrelated individuals, or commonly refers to residential environments for people with disabilities. I looked at the.
Home is different than.
Yeah.
Yeah.[1689.65]
Now, it just isn't, that's not, I say.
Next to the last one.
Considerate, it's just, it's under one, assisted living facility would, or that.
Exactly.
I think the one, I think the one by more than four unrelated persons is also, you get into some tricky situations.
I don't believe that one either.
I was looking at one or three.
Yep. Private or public.
I kind of liked the first one, yeah.
Any reason that should be one of the other group residence? If it's public, it's going to have other regs.
Yeah.
Isn't it? Like New York State regs and stuff.
Yeah.
The other one just provides room and board to unrelated individuals, just kind of seems, it's very similar to the one up top.
It seems a little similar.
I just wonder if it's almost a combination, a private or public housing facility that provides room and board to unrelated individuals. I wonder if it's a combination of the two of them.
Private or public housing facility that provides.
Room and board.
And board.
Related individuals.
It's fine. As opposed to living quarters?
Right.
What are our living quarters? Suites and rooms, and, I mean, yeah, I don't know. Jeez, we could be here all night doing this.
What do people think about that?
I, I kind of like that.
Yeah.
What do you think, Lorraine?
I don't know, it's got that meals in there, I mean.
Yeah. But I mean, I, I mean, you.
Room and board.
Board isn't board the meals.
Board is meals.
Yeah.
Oh, board isn't.
Yeah, that's.
Isn't board that.
Yeah, that's it. But I, I think that that's, I mean, you know, as I think of the, you know, examples that I'm aware of.
So you're saying a private or public housing facility that prob.
Provides room and board unrelated.
What do you think, Natalie, is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's better, it's better than what's there.
Yeah, I like that.
So are you going with number three?
A combination of one and three. A private or public housing facility that provides, and we'll cross that last one out.
Room and board.
Room and board to unrelated individuals.
What if you happen to have?
Four or two.
What?
Provides room and board, two unrelated, or four unrelated? Two or four? Provides room and board.
Doesn't matter.
Two, provides it two, four?
What if you happen to have, I'm just curious, what if you happen to have, like, I, I'm getting in here now, because it says unrelated individuals, what if you happen to have? Siblings that happen to, you know, be there.
They're related. Does it have to say unrelated, you know, I'm just thinking, like, you know?
Because then related individuals, it's any house.
Individuals.
Yeah, one is a residential.
Yeah, oh, true, yeah.
It's family, then.
Okay, so, okay, so just unrelated individuals, okay.
Be the same as your home with a kitchen and a bunch of bedrooms.
Because those two siblings are still unrelated to the.
To everybody else, yeah, yeah, okay.
And we're not specifying any quantity or anything.
Right, I think that gets.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Room and board, unrelated individuals.
Do we want?
So it's some.
Offers? Provides, I don't want a word.
What?
It distinguishes itself. It distinguishes itself away from being a hotel.
Right.
It distinguishes itself.
How?
It's not a.
Because you're not provided the board in the hotel.
It's not a housing facility?
There might be a restaurant or whatever.
What about?
Provides.
So in the existing definition, it does have, does not include private or public hospital motel or hotel? Do we need to include that?
We maybe need to say that.
So maybe we need to include that in there, right?
I'm more focused on, I would say yes, but I'm more focused on the provides. So like, provides insinuates that someone is paying for this service, or no? Because then, that definition alone, provides room and board to unrelated individuals, couldn't that just be a group of people living in a house who are unrelated to each other?
Don't have to make it themselves, it's not like.
Well, that's what I'm saying, provides, like, what is providing? Is that like?
It's not provided by the facility.
Well, this is provide room and board to unrelated individuals.
Private or public housing facility.
I'm just saying, like, provides, to me, like, is that insinuating a payment?
Okay.
They're doing a service?
Okay, so, wait a minute. Because the original, but the original one.
Maybe I'm overthinking that.
Okay, when, what do, what do we want to use this definition for?
Presidential.
For presidential.
Yeah, look what the old one says.
Look what what?
Club.
The old one.
Fraternity or sorority house, rooming house, does not include private, public hospital motel hotel.
So why are we changing it? Why was this, why did you feel this needed?
This is not a definition, too, this is also just examples of uses.
Right.
Provides a room and cooking facilities to unrelated individuals.
Say, could you speak louder?
Provides a room and cooking facilities to unrelated individuals.
Same issue.
I was going to say, that, that's not the problem, really.
But they're not providing.
Well, what's, what's providing what?
Cooking facilities, not providing.
The cooking?
Meals.
The food?
Yeah, but I think in a, in group residential. I, I, in group residential, you stay there, you get a room, and you get food. That's not like.
For payment. But now, this is their, okay, so, I have a niece who lives in cooperative housing. There's like nine of them, and it was out in Colorado, and they had to go get a variance. And they do have food, but they cook it themselves.
Right.
As a group.
So I think this is provided by.
Okay, oh, this, well, that's what I'm saying.
There's not facilities where you can go do it yourself, there's a facility where it is provided to you.
In a club, and, well, in a dorm, I guess, in all these examples, it is provided.
Maybe not, maybe not in a dorm, per se, but a fraternity, sorority house, yes.
What are we trying to get this to encompass?
Exactly, what are?
I think it, I think it was the definition, the existing, I'm sorry, the existing examples of uses, there you go, seemed outdated, a club, rooming house.
Well, rooming house, if that's all that's wrong with this definition.
But it's also club, define club.
A group of people who have a common interest.
I like tennis.
But that's not.
Let's go live together, I mean, I don't.
Like back in the old days. I think it's like the wine.
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly what it is, but.
It's outdated.
Okay, so what would you like to? So, rooming house, or is like a boarding house, is, sounds a little seedy, as we've discussed. Sounds like something out of a novel, so I don't think.
But that's along the lines of what we're trying to define, or no?
I guess so, I'm not quite clear on this, actually.
Well, honestly, it could, it could be all four of these examples, really.
One says group residence, though, and the others say residential housing. And where does cooperative housing come in on this? If you want to get into. I don't know.
Assisted living?
No, assisted living is different.
Yeah, I mean, that's different than the definition here.
I'm talking about the cooperative.
Oh.
Is that not?
I would.
No, cooperative living is.
That's not assisted.
No, no, it's quite the opposite, actually.
And I would say, what we're looking at here is definitely not assisted.
No. Not from the way it.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's the intent of, of these uses.
But it's interesting, in, in the context of my own life, somebody said, why would they put bridges where my husband is, where it is? And I thought for a minute, I said, probably because it was already zoned for group living.
Yeah.
And they didn't need to get a variance.
Sure.
So maybe we should.
We have examples of this.
I was going to. I think we better, yeah, why don't we keep looking up for a definite?
I mean, the perfect example, obviously, is a fraternity, that didn't mention perfect.
Yes, and a, a fraternity.
Example, if we're not going to hit those here.
Well, I think the point is, maybe we don't.
Maybe we don't need to change it? Or what? You don't need to worry?
No, I, no, I think that, like many other things, maybe we do need to worry, and just because it hasn't happened yet doesn't mean.
Oh, yeah, no, no, that's, I never think that's a good.
I mean, it probably does need.
That we say that, it will.
Probably still updated.
Yeah. Well, we have, I think we have time to.
All right.
Time to at least, so I think about that, right?
That's not an update to the chart of uses, that's just a change to a definition.
It doesn't impact the chart itself. But, yeah, I mean. Take a look at it, and we can, you know.
I mean, that would be good for, like, a mining town, or like the.
Then there's gold in there hills. What we do.
People just came in and.
It's a boarding house, a rooming house.
That's a, that's a.
We got rich being, having boarding houses.
Well, let's table that, we can look at, we can look at updating a definition, either separate, or.
Later on, but as a packet of changes to the, recommended changes to the trustees.
But back to. For people to think about, we'll bring it, we'll.
Discuss it at the next meeting.
So we still need to look at that definition, as we're just.
Yes.
Okay.
Mike, though, I'm guessing on a post-it next to him, has interior.
Which one?
Occupancy.
Oh, goodie.
Three, three local businesses in the village here. Olay Olay is 40.
Seats 40?
Yep. And Taco Bell is 74, and McDonald's is 72.
Wow.
Really? Taco Bell is more than McDonald's?
Oh, they're close to the same, and it all depends on how many.
I was going to say.
How many seats they provide.
Right, yeah.
So that's.
And so that's the, right, that's the.
Like in here, it's categorized as something different, because it's not technically a seating area. It's basically, they take the full square footage, where if you have a seated area, it depends on, A, how many seats you have, the distance between the seats.
Oh.
It's, so it's, it's a different setup.
In the case, anyone's wondering, I hear you can fit about 62 people in here.
Did you, what did?
Just off the top of my.
Is that our occupancy limit?
Well, if you have the chairs like this.
In rows?
Right, but that's, right, that's not for eating, that's like rows of chairs back there, and.
Standing space, and it also depends on whether the tables or chairs are fixed.
Right.
What was the name of the city?
It was like, the village is outward, they have a distant environment.
Yeah.
Or, that was upheld in court. Lisa?
60, so kind of.
60?
Slightly, slightly smaller than McDonald's and Taco Bell.
Bigger than.
But bigger than Ole Ole.
Ole is tight.
Also, right, there's always the ability to go, and if, if that's what it is in the code, you can always go get a variance, you know?
And if the planning board isn't unreasonable, okay.
There might be a good.
So we're thinking 60 somewhere in the, no. Okay, I can go with that, what do you think? I mean, it only.
I have been in Ole Ole, I, so I really want to.
I have been there twice, it's tight. It is tight.
Like more narrow and?
Yes, it's, yes, it's.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Kind of a shotgun kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, they have all the seating along the sides.
That could be pretty small.
What?
What?
No, I'm just being devil mad.
What?
It's always going to, right, there's always.
It could be pretty small. What, 60 of these? But it's still a space for 50 people.
That is, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, like.
And that's a minimum, if you want to have more, hey, great, good for you, thanks. You could have 100 in there for.
So what do we settle on?
Six.
60?
60.
Again, this is a recommendation, if the trustees, look at it, and they say, you know, we're really more comfortable with 61.
No less, no less than, right?
61 it is, but yeah.
Occupancy level of no less than.
Well, no, I said, what we're doing is recommending to the trustees, if the trustees have discussion, and they say, we're more comfortable with 61.
Why don't we say 65?
How about 63?
Oh, my gosh.
Somebody comes by themselves.
My number, yeah.
I mean, the whole point is to reduce traffic, reduce idling cars.
Yep.
And take them there.
Kind of.
And I feel like, especially, you know, with, as the, you know, reducing the cars, that gives you ample space to sit outside, right? Maybe there's people.
You can then park.
Waiting, you're not, right?
Yeah. Well, especially if they have any outdoor seating, if, whatever restaurants go in there, and they want, or outdoor seating, they're not going to want idling cars, if they have outdoor seating. Right?
You want a calculated occupancy load, that's how I would say it.
Calculated occupancy load?
60, 60 or more.
Minimum.
A minimum.
Okay, so let me go back and ask you this, Natalie, now, Okay, so let me go back and ask you this, Natalie. Now, what did you decide we have to change? You can't re, no matter what, we can't have a public hearing for what you have.
Correct.
Correct. So the next board trustee meeting, you'll have these changes. You'll have to reassign another.
Public hearing. So another two weeks. But you have a second October meeting because you skipped Columbus State this year.
And some of this could be done in a new meeting. This could be done in a new meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except for the public hearing, it could be done in a new meeting.
Okay.
So.
Okay, but do we want, so I guess I could come equipped with two versions of the bill. One, completely removing the CMT high-traffic, if this still needs to be sussed out, and then one including the new recommendation.
I would say that is.
Yes.
Still with the new recommendations, who else will take two cents back?
I will still come prepared with the second version, but okay.
I think that will move the BTD, BTD and JGS forward. Hopefully, we can move this forward too, but at least we can move BTD and JGS forward.
We're doing.
So then, um, minimum calculated occupancy load of sixty.
Yes.
Do I have to say?
And you think that sentence is like
occupancy was.
Minimum has a minimum calculated occupancy load of sixty, period.
Calculated occupancy load of sixty.
Non-contiguous parcels.
To another. And one per parcel.
And one per parcel. Okay. So then, I will. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to make a subsequent recommendation to board of trustees that they consider including language into additional conditions for adding high-traffic food and beverage to CMT to include a minimum calculated occupancy load of sixty, non, drive-throughs on non-contiguous parcels and only one per parcel.
The Chinese food restaurant contiguous to McDonald's?
It's on the other side of this. No.
Is what?
It's a non-contiguous parcel.
What is?
Right.
Does it separate by a street?
Separated by a street.
That doesn't count.
Right.
I think we should might want to define that.
Drive-through. Can I share a boundary?
With a parcel that has.
Well, actually, so, you know, this came up once to me is when you're supposed to send out a notice to contiguous parcels about a public and it doesn't, it doesn't exactly.
Across the street.
It doesn't include across the street, which horrifies me.
Sometimes you own to the center line.
But if it's a village-owned road.
Yeah.
Then that's different.
But those that own to the center line, it would be contiguous.
Their property line would next to each other.
So that I said, gee, you know.
So the parcels would be contiguous.
Right, because it would be, okay.
Yeah, I mean, when I sent my help people to send out mailings, I always do across the street.
I know you did, but I remember saying, I was shocked when it doesn't say that in our code, I don't think, because I would want to know when something's going to go right across the street from me. That's more important in some ways sometimes than sideways, you know, but I don't know. So I would think, I don't know, this is your, this is your call.
You want to figure out how to draw that up so it makes, you know the intent. Can you figure out how to? Okay. Natalie will ensure the appropriate intent is.
Conveyed.
Before I send the trustee. She will send, she will send.
I would like to make a motion that we update our recommendation to the board of trustees for the inclusion of high-traffic food and beverage in CMT. The additional conditions should include one per parcel, a minimum calculation.
Calculated.
calculation occupancy load of sixty and something about non.
Language to capture the intent of non-contiguous.
Non-contiguous.
Yeah.
Non-contiguous parcels.
Okay, motion by Lisa.
Sort of.
Second.
Good work.
All in favor? Okay, there we go.
Oh, my God. We'll go over.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, so that will be an SP plus. We'll pass on the plus to the trustees.
You guys covered the other stuff here while we did talk about.
You did. The only other thing was alterations to building or improved site should be cleaned up. We'll discuss it.
Alterations to building or improved site.
Right. Is that just the?
Is the other one that needs to be updated?
Is this one up here, Mike? Is that what you remember by that?
No.
What was that?
I just wanted to make sure we checked out everything here while I was gone and make sure you talked about.
Yes.
Can we rebuild it?
Yes.
And.
That we didn't talk about.
We talked about.
That was, okay, yes, okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is to interview a potential planning board member. I sent her on the name earlier, so the dad is here to introduce herself and talk a little bit about it, so welcome. If you want to, you can stand up at the little podium there. The microphone will just pick you up a little bit better if you stand up there for online. Yeah. And just tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, where you live, and why are you a student being on the planning board?
Okay, sure.
And then people will ask you questions. Yes, we'll ask.
Okay, great. I'm a little bit nervous. Sorry.
Oh, don't be. I know, I mean, we're arguing about words, man, so, you know, you're good.
Okay, great. So my name is Soladah Almeida, and I live at 818 Kuga Heights Road, and I've been there for thirteen years. Yes, sorry, was it?
Oh, no, I thought, for some odd reason, I thought it was Shannon Park.
Oh, no, no.
Whoever I told Shannon Park, I lied.
Well, I thought she was your neighbor.
No, she's my neighbor.
I think the word neighbor, very generous.
She's my neighbor.
She's your neighbor, yes.
Exactly.
I go to the block party, and I actually have your neighbor.
Oh, so she's, is she closer to you than she used to?
She's closer to Carla.
Yeah, she's across the street.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I work at Cornell. I'm the director of admissions for the vet program, for the veterinary medicine program, and I've always been interested in what happens in these meetings. It's really, I haven't had the opportunity to attend one of the open sessions, but I've got to be here tonight. And I guess I'm just curious in general as to how decisions are made that impact our community. I'm passionate really about the combination of data and also like how you can make informed decisions with data, and it sounds like you guys are doing that tonight. So there's a lot of alignment with what I'm passionate about and what I like to do in my work. So, yeah, I think that's a little bit about me. I have two children, one who is fourteen and goes to Ithaca High School, and then an eighteen-year-old who's at Cornell this first year.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah. So I've been in the village for thirteen years, and I've always liked to see what, you know, what's been changing, what's been going on. And so, you know, I was just kind of generally curious, and I mentioned it to Carolyn, and Carolyn mentioned it to me. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Great.
Great. With that, anybody who has a question? I won't go around. Anybody, go ahead.
I have a question for you. So is there anything in the village that you'd like to see changed?
Oh, that's a great question. I think for, for me, I've seen a lot of positive changes. I'm curious about some of the vacant buildings. I'd like to see some of those changed. And then I'm also curious to see what's going to happen with the mall. So with the new condos or apartments that were on Oak Crest, I was, is it Oak Crest? I was curious about, like, will there be a sidewalk that's accessible? So I'd like to see like the changes that are made to some of the areas like that. So I think, yeah, that's probably what I'm curious about and what I'd like to see some changes. And of course, access to green spaces as well. Yeah, so before working at the vet school, I was in CALS, in the College of Agricultural Life Sciences, and worked a lot with the folks in natural resources, and a lot of my passion was around that too.
Well, this is an odd question, but we have encountered this before with the, are you a U.S. citizen?
I am a U.S.
Thank you.
So actually, I became a U.S. citizen in my twenties. I immigrated from Argentina.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, yeah. So actually, for my, I immigrated to the U.S. for my dad to pursue his PhD.
I did, it was just that we did, we had someone that was a candidate, and it turned out, we were unaware that they were not a U.S. citizen. Of course, that was a disappointment. So I just, before we get too excited, I just thought, sure, okay, terrific. And you already sort of said, and so you have a lot of administrative experience, so us talking about all this does not put you to sleep?
No, it kind of reminds me a little bit of what I go through at Cornell when acronyms are being used that I don't know what they stand for. I think that I had kind of a glossary for acronyms. Yeah, a lot of what I'm doing right now at the vet school is actually, I'm stepping into the role of someone who was in the role before me for nineteen years, and they were a little bit adverse to some of the technologies that we really needed to use as we have so many applications coming in. So one of the things I'd like to see is including a digital, you know, digital technologies and updated technologies that they make things more accessible for a lot of different folks. So I think that's what I, that was my only, you know, thought it's like it'd be great to digitize some of this content.
That's kind of.
Kevin smiled too. It wasn't just me that smiled then.
I know. I think this is one of the reasons our code is not very accessible. And in fact, just working on this, you know, you can't search it like you need to and that sort of thing. So that's, but this is the first step to at least know what we want. And then the formatting is another, or the platform is another matter, but.
Yeah, I can, I can tell there was a lot of thoughtful consideration until what was shared. And so, yeah, I agree. This sounds like a great first step, and then like, what would be the next step? And I also heard you kind of talking earlier about like having to find the page by control finding what page number. And so I think that there's things like that that I would, you know, that I'd like to do, and that's one of the things I'm doing right now in my current role.
Anything else, please?
Not for me.
Yeah? Jim?
I don't have anything.
Oh, Jim, where is he? He's.
Go ahead, Jim.
No, I said I did not have anything.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well, thanks for coming and introducing yourself and taking some questions. Oh, go ahead, Lisa.
Actually, I should ask, do you know what our schedule is and the time commitment involved? Has Carolyn filled you in?
Seven until nine.
Yeah, so it's the first, it's the second Monday and the last Tuesday of the month.
Oh.
And it's, yep, it's from seven to nine. We try to.
Theoretically.
Start on time even though we end it, we only start at seven oh two somehow. It's not on purpose. But yeah, we do try to end by nine. There are, there's at least one special meeting a year that we meet on the trustee's schedule, so that's on a Monday that's not ours. And then there are some subcommittees like we're doing here where we're going over the charter uses. We've divided it up into a couple of different pairs to review that outside these meetings. People decide how they want to do that in person, Zoom, here, coffee shop, whatever. And then we do end up canceling, just the way that the calendar lands each year, we do end up usually canceling a couple of meetings because they land on holidays or around holidays. And then we do have a, just like Carolyn's here tonight, we also send somebody from the planning board to the board of trustees meetings each month. So each person gets a month and they cycle around and you can do it in person, you can do it over Zoom, so that one's a little easier. And then we just kind of, whoever that is, Lisa, reports back out to the, to the planning board, and that's the next thing on the agenda sale.
But we can fill in for one another.
Yeah, we, yeah, we fill in.
But the nice thing is, is you can do it on Zoom or go back if you miss. But the intent, of course, being to bring issues to the trustees sometimes that we, as I'm talking about, things that impact us going back and forth, but it's, it's really helpful. And, yes, and I guess at this point, it would be an alternate position that we're considering.
So the board is, is full right now, except for the alternate position. And so that's what we're looking to.
Fill.
To fill.
And that is, you would not have voting privileges unless someone was absent, but you would, we would want you to act as if you were a full member with your input. And there is a stipend, I guess we'd call it, yeah.
For, yeah, if you're, if you're.
Once you're a full voting member, so.
Or if you are appointed for.
Because we are expected to put this on our calendar and be, be here whenever possible. But, yeah, the thing is, when we say seven to nine, there have been times in the past, and it hasn't happened in a long time, but every once in a while, something difficult comes up. And obviously, it's like anything, it's like any job. It depends on how much you want to put into it.
But we do try to, you know, working with Mike, he has a good feel for, you know, things that are coming up, so we could try to, you know, manage the agenda to make sure we don't just, you know, you know.
Correct, exactly.
We'll put you on there because then we'd be here until midnight.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in. We appreciate it.
I was just going to say, Mike. I was just saying to you.
One of my questions is, how do you go about getting, you know, the voice of the constituent to your customer, or we'd like to call it in the village, how do you keep their perspective in mind when you're making the types of decisions like you make tonight?
Well, that's a good question. That's a very good question.
I'll speak to mine.
Yeah.
Because I think everybody does it a little bit differently. I know that, right, we've sent out, you know, Carolyn sent out some surveys, or the trustees did, you know, in general, very targeted things. One of the things that we do like to do for the makeup of the board is get people on the board from various areas of the village, right? We don't just want, you know, everyone, and different housing types too. We've got, you know, people who, you know, have owned a house for a long time, or, you know.
Renters.
Own an apartment, or rent an apartment from different areas of the village. So, you know, one of the things, the way that I, you know, as I'm asking people or talking about people, it's just, you know, my social networks of people in the village here, you know, where I live nearby, and then also, you know, friends and colleagues that I have that live in different areas of, you know, we'll just casually chat or, you know, talk about things. They know how to get ahold of me. And we, you know, we post our contact information out on the village too, so we get emails from folks who are in favor of something or concerned about something or have a suggestion about something. And, yeah.
I think it's really hard. First of all, the planning board, you know, we're an advisory board. We don't actually, can't legislate anything, but I think it's, it's very hard to get input. And I really, there are times, though, when, it's usually a neighborhood kind of thing, you know, and just kind of soliciting stuff from people. I happen to live also down the road from you, and we sort of have our little group of people that, you know, you feel comfortable talking with. Don't really know one another, but on a personal level, but yeah, when there's something really difficult, for example, the sewer situation that went in, of course, I was on the plan, I'm on the planning board. So people will come up to you and give you an earful if there's something that's really bothering them, but it's like so many things, unless something's really bothering them. And it's just really hard for people to make a commitment to speaking up. But, so it's usually, there have been some times, though, when something that we were doing in the village was very upsetting to a large group, and we've had this room filled.
They'll be here. Oh, yeah. I think one, one of the other things too is.
What?
Go ahead.
It's real important you notice the contiguous parcels.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're, they're told.
Yep.
What's that again?
Public hearings, you know.
Yes. The public hearings are, is what we encourage people to come. And there have been some people that will write, and if you just, actually, I usually answer them back, even if I'm not the chair, and just say, gee, you know, it's going to be, would you be interested in knowing when it will be on our agenda? Because they're worried about something, and I encourage them to come. And every now and again, they do. And I think the last time I did that with someone, they decided they were interested in what's going on here more than they realized. And I think they're now on the BZA. You got to be careful when it comes to make.
So I was just.
That's how I actually got on the boards. I came to about something, and the next thing you know.
I came to the, I came to the planning board to get, I could come to the planning board because it wasn't a BZA variance. It was something, it was a cluster sub-development, so the planning board could make the exception or not. Yeah. Here I sit, you know, over ten years later. I had to go back and look. I think it's ten years now.
And I can be close.
It was twenty fifteen, so. But the other thing that we do too, to, you know, to get feedback is, and it's kind of along the same lines, is we have, there's a ton of committees. There's the Greenway Committee. We've talked about forming, you know, other committees too, about, you know, maybe with some local businesses to kind of talk to. Them more regularly to get their input about things like that. So I think there's some new things that are being discussed about, you know, ways to garner more input for folks in the community. We sent out the newsletter, but after the fact, that's like, hey, here's things that we just did. Oh, but, you know, the outreach and the communication, it is, it's hard.
If you have any great ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. I, when I moved here, I would go and read the minutes, and I did that for a while, and I also signed up for the newsletter. But yeah, I'm just curious. It's like, when you're making decisions, how you feel confident that is, you know, representative of, of your neighbors and what they want or don't want. And just, I know you don't necessarily make decisions, but you're making recommendations.
Well, I, I think the, the planning board, I think it's a good makeup, and I think that we have a lot of really good examples of concerns and things that have come up in the past, that as new projects come forth, those things rise to the top and be like, oh, remember last time something like this came up, there were concerns about this. And I, it's very common. I know I said regularly and other people do, but, you know, we're here to, you know, safeguard and watch out for, you know, the people who live here in the village. It's not what I want.
Exactly.
You know, it's what being members of the village, what we, what we, you know, we as planning board members and we as residents of the village think is, you know, something that is appealing to the village and isn't just, right, like we said, we don't want to turn, you know.
Crepeham Road into, you know, downtown Ithaca. Down there, maybe that's fine, but
it's not something that, you know, we feel from our personal experience and from talking to others is what people in the village want up here.
I think one of the things that's really important that we have achieved actually is, I mean, if I had my way, I'd be, have trees everywhere and everything, but I realize that this is my thing. So we have done things to try to protect everyone, but for the greater good as opposed to our own personal agenda. Sometimes, and I think that's, can be hard at times, but it, you know, it's just a matter of finding the balance. But we know, it's, I think harder now is trying to anticipate the future, which is getting a little more difficult because things are going faster. Climate change is happening faster, all those kinds of things. And we, I think sometimes it's hard not to think, oh, it's going to be like this forever. It isn't. So trying to anticipate what's going to change, it's not always easy, but.
I'm waiting to be less anonymous. We walk our dogs and people tell me all sorts of things. And I think the minute they figure out that I'm on the planning board, I might hear some more.
You don't want them to know?
I don't know. I mean.
Take pride. No, you be, no, no. I have found that when I say I'm on the planning board, that they tend to tell you what's bothering them. They're going to, because they're not going to come in and talk to all of us perhaps, but you can be the messenger.
Yeah, I said they are, I already get earfuls, so I don't know what it'll be like.
Combination of, oh, you mean the town? Nope, nope, the village of Lansing, not the town of Lansing. And do you know what's going on with? Yeah. And then feedback about it, which is good. How about you, Lauren? How?
Pretty much, well, you guys, well.
Still at home?
Pretty much what you said. I mean, I pay, I've lived in the village since two thousand and six, but I'm also from Ithaca, so I've lived here all my life. So I'm very in tune to all the happenings. And I retired. I know, I've gotten people in trouble like in the last couple of weeks. I just had a car tow. Well, John Courtney had that car towed for me at my.
Did you find Lorraine in like a family in a trench coat, something like Angela finds?
Now, I lost track of what I was going to say, but I retired from Cornell in January two thousand and twenty-four, and so I have free time on my hands, and I'm out walking the neighborhood all the time. And so I'm talking to people all the time. And so I do hear a lot of complaints from people, but I also observe a lot of things on my own that I, that I've brought back. And if you stay, you'll hear my update from the trustee meeting because I was mostly the agenda. But yeah, I mean, I bring things to Mike's attention, you know, that I've seen, and, you know, you can, that's all you can do. I figured that's my way of giving back, you know.
Nice. Thank you.
No other questions?
No other questions. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, Soladah.
Thank you.
I did mention, oh, no, you were. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the trustee report.
So it was a pretty short meeting. It was only twenty-five minutes long, and they only had one agenda item, but I brought four additional items. But I'll, I'll tell you what their agenda item was first. It was the, the annual deer management update. The mayor had to sign the deer damage permit application for two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, and Ronnie did move to sign it. They had a guest speaker, Bern, Bern Blasi. He's a Cornell professor. You probably know him. He's from Agonite Sciences. And he's in charge of deer management, and he came to the meeting to discuss the village's deer management plan. And so he was asking if the village wanted to discuss going the same route that the village of Kuga Heights did. And so Ronnie said, that's a bigger conversation for another time. So they did not.
That, what is?
Calling them.
Calling them? We call, we, but we already did call them.
And then mow them down.
They use some mechanism where you couldn't utilize the meat. So I'm assuming it has some sort of, no, in the village of Kuga Heights.
Oh.
I'm assuming it has some sort of like poison in it.
Oh, no. We, I thought, but we just, I thought we both.
Dart guns.
Yeah, and he said something like, so then people couldn't eat that meat, right? Isn't that what he?
That's what he said of the village of Kuga Heights.
Well, I think that's unacceptable.
And see, discussion for another time.
Whoa, yeah, yeah.
That's interesting. I'm glad you told me that.
So the things that I brought to the meeting was, I wanted to bring up again about the speeding on certain roads in the village, specifically Beaumont, Norway, and Janiver. specifically Beaumont, Norway, and Janiver.
So the usual stuff.
It's just gotten so bad through there. People are not stopping for the stop signs, and it's just out of control. So I wanted to bring that back up because I know Carolyn had brought it up at a meeting back in early August. Twice, I know, twice you did. And John Courtney did say he had extra radar signs. I did let them know that I thought the radar sign on Dart Drive, I know you'll probably disagree with me, but I think it is working, not for everybody, but a good majority of people do slow down when they see it. And I've witnessed it, just so you know. And I wanted them to know that, but I think they need to add another one down on Graham Road just past Swardo. But anyway, John Courtney had said two meetings ago, two trustee meetings way back, over a month ago, that he had extra radar signs and that he could put one on Beaumont. And I thought that would be a good start to at least slow the traffic down before the stop sign, right? The first stop sign. So anyway, I wanted to bring that back up because I'm watching, as you know, and there's no sign, a sign has not appeared. A radar sign has not appeared. So I brought that back up. I have had email communication with Ronnie and John back and forth. And John has confirmed that he is going to put a sign up on Beaumont. It's not there yet, but I'm, it'll be soon. The other thing were some small things, like I asked about the stakes along Dart Drive with the caution tape. Why are they still there? They've been there for over a year. Apparently Ronnie told me that John told him it's because they planted new grass there and they want to keep the stakes there because they don't want trucks backing over those areas. Didn't make much sense to me. But anyway, that's what he said. And they said they can pull the stakes out in the spring. The other thing I brought to their attention was, at the end of Northwoods Drive, just past the Harrell Park, there's a big cattle gate right before the village trail starts. And there were these overgrown weeds that were going over the top of the cattle gate. And it was blocking the sign that says to pick up after your dog. Anyway, it looked terrible, and it's been driving me crazy. So I brought pictures with me, and John did send somebody over the next morning with a weed whacker and took the weeds down. That might be a nice spot to plant your daffodils when you do balls.
Okay.
Don't block the sign.
Well, no, the sign is in the middle of the cattle gate, but along there, just to make it pretty.
Is it, can the tractor drive? I don't have in my head what it looks like. Is it tractor drivable?
Oh, yeah, I think so. It's just, it's not, it's like the village path is on the, starts on the other side of the cattle gate. And so basically, it's a patch of grass up to the cattle gate. There's sidewalks on both sides.
The only line is that is that we were late to vote being this year because we didn't get the
Oh, right.
Time, so we didn't grant. So we just kind of forgot about it until the last meeting when John was like, I really want to do the votes. So actually, I did it today. So I had to contact the company directly. And so I placed an order today. I talked to the tractor man, the planter. And he said, yes, but then he, later he was like, I only want to do two spots. I don't want to do four. So now we have to, I have to go back to the Greenway Committee and selectively take two of the parks, which is not what we did last time. So I have to think through what would be the best places for them. And he doesn't. Another option, I'm thinking, what I need to talk to John tomorrow about is, will, if we offer to drive the tractor, will he not care? Because we've got three guys who drive tractors here. So let me ask John, if I can ask Bill that. If Bill says yes, then we can plant wherever we want. If he says no, we have to select until we decide what we have to plant. And I'll do that with the Greenway Committee. This is all just.
Okay. So the last thing was, and this was one of Lisa's things that I brought to the board, where the the new trees that were planted along West Graham, outside of the graffiti building. They look very sickly and they're not well. I don't think they were watered all summer, probably after they were planted. John, but John had already put in an order for that, to plant new trees. They're going to remove them and plant them, so. That was it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is other business. So you learn.
You should probably have Mike go first because I probably have a couple of things on here that I don't want to take his thunder from. Okay, so I saw that Ross is supposed to open on October 11th. Did you know that?
They're open whenever they want to now. They have their file.
Okay. Anyway, they've advertised that they're opening October 11th.
Temporary. They have to still do the side exit stairs. There's temporary stairs on there right now. They have concrete stairs they're putting in. So they have a temporary, but they can go through whatever they need to go through.
Did you notice they put a small awning on the side of the building? Oh, okay.
Yeah, awnings are fine.
Oh, okay. This is just kind of, this isn't anything really planning board related, but it's just local related. I learned that Cuga Medical and the YMCA are going to partner on a community pantry. The Cuga Med has a pantry room, a community pantry room over at the mall, and it's in the enclosed hallway that they put in. They actually have a room. Did you notice? Oh, okay.
They have an extra room now. I didn't know they were doing that. I know they have a room that's considered a training room right now.
Well, they have, it's in the hallway and it's, it's like, I don't know how big the room is because when I went over and looked, the door was shut and they have a tag outside and it says Community Pantry. Anyway, apparently they have had a little pantry in there, but it's not been well taken care of, I don't think. And I don't know if it was just for staff. I'm not sure. But anyway, they're partnering with the YMCA. And the YMCA is going to run the pantry now over at the mall and also down at the new Cuga Med building downtown on Meadow Street. They also have a community pantry on their second floor down there. So the YMCA is going to manage that. And so Ed over at the YMCA is going to be doing, just like they do at the YMCA Monday and Fridays. They're going to be doing that, open to the community. I just wanted to share that. I wanted to ask you about Dairy One.
I drove by the other day and I looked because I thought, oh, how did you even notice? There's just, there's just a little.
I don't miss much, Lisa.
No, but all there was was a little bit of a wooden ramp to go in.
Oh, when I saw them.
They've taken stuff down.
Oh, they installed that counter on the outside of the building.
I didn't see a counter.
Yeah.
Oh, I was going to say.
That was my, well, I mean, first I saw.
Well, it doesn't really.
The ramps, then the picnic tables with the umbrellas showed up, and then the counter, and then that was like I done deal.
I mean, as it stands right now, that use isn't allowed.
Yeah, right.
We were going to talk about that, right? Or who has to approve?
Do they have to get a variance for that? They do.
Or zoning. Rizone, yeah.
They're in an improper zone at this point.
Yeah.
It's right. They'd have to have a use variance, but shit wouldn't get.
Yeah. There's a partnership, yeah, I mean.
Whatever.
And I had one last thing. I noticed a house down on the Johnstone Circle. It looks like somebody might be having solar panels installed on the roof.
Yep, nothing that comes with a special permit, though.
Oh, okay.
No, I was going to say, I noticed today there was a truck, or something.
There's been a huge going ons down there.
They approved for it. I've been out there once.
Okay.
Wouldn't we just allow the solar panels in the front yard? Didn't we allow it?
No.
No.
I just saw near Forest Home, somebody put, filled their front yard with solar panels.
Oh, isn't it pretty?
I understand why they did it because they have a backyard.
Right.
But it does create a look.
There was an.
There's other incentives that around in the village, outside the village, yeah, so. Okay.
That's it.
Come.
I noticed Kingston Cuisine had permits in the window.
Where is that? What's that?
That's the Jamaican.
Jamaican place.
Oh, the Jamaican place. Are they?
They have cleared everything. They got all the grease traps in they're supposed to have. So they are cleared to possibly open up next week.
Oh, wow.
That's over in the Cuga Mall.
Yeah.
The Cuga Mall works.
See, you got all the.
What's their occupancy? What is their occupancy load? That's a decent.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's the seating in there? If I know that off the top of your head.
Look up again.
Because that used to be pretty big when it was Peking, remember? They had a lot of people in there. When they did the buffet in there years ago, they're alive. Yeah.
It's not that big.
No, but it's, they used to have big circular.
Taco Bell and everything, so.
Have to go to Taco Bell, too. I've never been.
I've never been inside Taco Bell. I don't.
I'm trying to book a window and see what they're doing.
I got to go and eat.
Yeah, they have their CFC, the health departments, all better.
So what is it called? Kingston?
Cuisine.
Kingston.
So it's Jamaican food.
She said she wanted to open up next week, I believe.
Oh, good work.
Cool.
And then Adelita is not yet?
They're still, as far as I know, they're still waiting for their liquor license to stay.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Lisa?
So I already brought up the fact that, you know, I think the drive-through island car is not a good thing. So I heard a rumor that we could, well, no, it's not a rumor, but I had Carolyn found at the NICOM that there's legislation on the books for graffiti. And so we were thinking of pursuing that. Is that the case for the one building?
He just sent Eric his second notice Friday.
Okay, so how many notices does my friend Eric get?
Carolyn and Natalie and I have, we're going to go three notices and then right to the.
And then what happens?
You end up getting a.
Summon.
A fine?
Summon.
A summons.
To the town.
We got a file.
You're getting to know the people of the town, aren't you? And so then you do a summons and then what?
Then we have an appearance date and then.
But what's the penalty?
The court decides the penalty.
Oh, the court decides, okay.
We can update our law.
I know, but the court is still going to not charge the full penalty to somebody.
But we can also add up to one year jail time.
The court still has to.
I know, I know.
This is so tempting in this case.
More than you ask, like, if you ask for the mountain, you'll get the moon. Let's not ask for the moon.
I'm just saying the court decides the penalty.
But I think that we should consider what our law is. It's like I was given an ICOM from the State Department of Buildings.
So in other words.
Those things are jail time or a fine. We're not going to put you in jail and fine you. So it's like an or, so I mean.
But we have nothing, but we've talked about.
The less violations theoretically, we will get.
So, because in the past, I did bring up, can't we do something about our buildings? And so there is some stuff.
That's an interesting.
As long as the village is willing to expend the resources to do this, it is not a cheap endeavor.
Okay.
By any means.
All right, so we should talk about that. Because I mean, if we're revising the code, I mean.
Yeah.
This would be a time to, okay. And then the other thing I wanted to just mention, I don't know. So as you know, we have a legislative race coming up. And John Dennis has stepped down.
Yes.
And so Deborah Dawson has a write-in campaign. And I believe that's it because I believe Mr. Johani also stepped down. So even though I believe it was in the, one of the publications, I think that he was still, but he's, he withdrew his campaign, too. So I just don't know if you know that. But it's important that people know that for our district, so. And I guess you have to fill in the bubble or it won't get counted and all that good stuff. But I don't know. Having just gotten back, I thought, what's going on? And then I heard it on the radio today.
Signs out there, too.
Yeah.
About the write-in, not necessarily.
Oh, yes, no, no, it was, it was, it was on the radio today, though, that John had withdrawn his bid for, so I just didn't know if everybody knew that. But tell people because it's important that we write in and vote.
Just go back to the graffiti and issuing violations. I think because the planning board and the board of trustees work so closely together and typically the board trustees prefers to follow the lead of the planning board. I think that if we're going to say as, not an official policy, but just as a general policy, we should be proactively noticing violations along Trippham Road. If that's something the planning board is behind, I think it would be helpful for them, for you to say something collectively as a board to the board of trustees that noticing violations along Trippham Road will be helpful towards, you know, everything that you're trying to do for the village in terms of preserving our code and promoting our code and, you know, keeping the village in accordance with what our expectations are.
I think, not just Trippham, we're everywhere, I mean.
Oh, well, I was just, I wouldn't limit.
Why do we raise violations? It is North Trippham Record.
But then what about.
Yeah, you found also some on, but yeah, just maybe just then generally. Say, as a policy, we should be noticing violations on a regular.
Yeah, I think we are, but also, but to Natalie's point is, we also have to be prepared to put some resources aside to address it. You know, once we notice something, I mean.
When they get to a point where one of our primaries looks like it does, I think everybody's kind of.
I'm going to write pseudo and ask them to do it.
Yeah, the board of trustees have to decide that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
But also they think about this in hotel, which is tried at that stage, but it's been longer time.
Yeah.
So I think in that case, there's also a reasonableness to go forward with being noticing violations.
Well, I do, too, but I'm just saying.
But if the planning board thinks that, then I would personally, since I also think that would be interested in you expressing that to the board of trustees, because the more that they hear that that's something that supports the planning board, the more that they would be willing to spend the time and resources. So if I just want to consider that.
Okay.
Yes. The only thing I'll mention is October, Kevin, you are the trustee liaison.
Okay, which means what, next Monday, or six? Oh, what? Yes, next Monday. Yeah, October starts.
In person now.
So Jody had already sent out the agenda in an email early because she's on vacation. Do you remember seeing that? Okay, it's got the Zoom link. You don't have to come in person if you don't want. You can Zoom in. And they do record the meetings, so you can go back and watch them afterwards if you missed anything.
Is there anything that, oh, Jim, sorry, I skipped over you. I'm looking up there. Anything you wanted to bring up, Jim, for other business?
No, no, I don't have anything. I just actually want to, because I've been gone for a week or two, just ask a clarification. So, so there's, from what I understand from what Lisa said, there's no candidate other than Deborah Dawson as a write-in for the seat that she formerly, formerly held?
Correct.
Okay.
And what she, yes, and I can talk to you about it. But what she said, basically, I mean, she had not planned to run, obviously. And but apparently, there's a rather large number of new people coming on to the board, what is it called? The Legislative Board, whatever it's called. And like, more than 75% are going to be brand new people. And she said, you know, times are getting difficult to maneuver all this stuff. It's getting worse, not easier. There needs to be some people on the board that have some history. And that was, she felt that she would change her mind because of that, because she really thinks it's important. And I think she's probably right because stuff is changing, even as we're sitting here, probably at the federal level, and it's just going to trickle down to all of us.
Yeah, yeah, I just, thank you. I just wanted to get that clarification. Thank you. I don't have anything.
Okay, is there anything that anybody on the planning board wants Kevin to bring up at the next trustee meeting? We said that we would, at our last joint meeting, you know, one of the outcomes was we said we would, you know, try to share things more timely with them, if there were things that we felt we needed to bring up. So if you do have anything, let Kevin know, get an email. The Village website has transitioned over to villageoflancyny.gov. If you want a villageoflancyny.gov email address, you can get one. I have one now. When I send out the next set of emails, I will send it from that email address and you all can just start using that one.
Okay.
That way you'll have it.
And then? Who do we, Joe, how do we get?
Let me know if, and I'll just send one email to.
So Ronnie had sent out an email quite a while ago. I still have it with the email addresses. But I don't know how to set up.
Right, yeah, so let me know.
Send instructions.
If you want it, let me know because those ones he sent out aren't created. They were suggestions like.
Oh.
But it will be.
Oh, okay.
And then we've got directions to do it. You can access it. There's a webpage you can go to to access it. I have it added into my Gmail account, so I can just go to Gmail and see them both in there.
Oh, good. I was going to say, I'd like.
And then when you send an email, you can, I can either send it from my Gmail address or I can send it from my Village of Lansing address, so. And I've been using.
But you can see it in your Gmail address? Okay, that would be.
I was emailing an ICOM today to, for some things and they, it works fine, so there you go. I'll send it, I'll send.
I'll request some IT help.
Yeah, because I don't know how to do it.
Okay.
Are you going to change them on the website, too?
Yeah, they will get changed on the website if you want to, you know. Again, I would encourage people to get a Village of Lansing email address because.
So.
For lots of users, but instead of using.
What's the app thing? What, how does, we use your name?
Ronnie will have to go and do it, but if everybody wants one, I'll just go and request.
I think we don't, I don't think we have a choice, right?
Oh, I don't think we should have a choice, frankly, but.
So I will request.
I'll request.
And then we need instructions on how to set it up.
And it's, I followed the instruction sheet that they sent out and it worked fine.
Oh, they sent one out? Who did? Did you only get one?
No, I had to go and request one from Ronnie because there's a temporary, they'll, the hosting provider has to create it.
Oh, I see.
And then there's a temporary password that you'll each individually get, right? Because it's.
Gotcha. All right.
Well, I followed their directions to get it created. And then if people want to add it to email, I can walk you through how to do that because that's not part of their thing, but it works fine.
Okay. We need to go into executive session, right?
Yeah, but I think that was everything. Did you have anything, Natalie, that you want to throw?
I think on the 13th of next month, you will have your first solar array special permit. About that, it's exciting. It's a tier-two ground monitor array, rather large, on the Shore Drive. They're supposed to be getting this stuff in to be about a second. So could possibly have that on the 13th.
Right, and we don't have to do only COVID.
You know, right?
It is, very exciting.